Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Spokane City Council meeting for April 12th. And we have a couple of proclamations coming up. We have a report from the Lincoln Heights Neighborhood, and we have reports from the Office of Police Ombudsman and Office of Police Ombudsman Commission. So we're going to kind of go in that order. And we're going to start with a proclamation that Councilmember Mum is going to read for Days of Remembrance. And she has a guest with her as well. Councilmember Mum. Oh, wait.
Thank you, Council.
Wait, wait.
President, would you like to take a roll first?
Wait, we are going to take a roll. I'm trying to not do that today, apparently.
Council, Council President Beggs?
Here.
Councilmember Burke?
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart?
Present.
Councilmember Kinnear?
Present.
Councilmember Mum?
Here.
Councilmember Stratton?
Here.
Councilmember Wilkerson?
Present.
Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
All right. Now, Councilmember Mum, with your proclamation. You are on mute, though.
Together, we will get through this meeting. I want to share the City of Spokane proclamation that we would have done at the beginning of last week, but it was following some holidays. So it was actually for a special remembrance last week, but we can use this every day. So thank you so much. Whereas the Holocaust was a state-sponsored systematic persecution and genocide of European Jewry by Nazi Germany and its collaborators from 1933 to 1945, wherein six million Jews were murdered and millions of other non-Aryan suffered grievous oppression and death under Nazi tyranny. And whereas pursuant to an act of Congress in 1980, the United States Holocaust Memorial Council designates the Days of Remembrance for the victims of the Holocaust to be Sunday, April 4th through Saturday, April 10th. And Thursday, April 8th is the International Day of Remembrance, known as Yom Ashoah. And whereas it is important to recognize that attacks on Jews occur in our city and have significantly increased this past year. Holocaust remembrance at this season in Spokane continues to have a strong presence, with this year being no exception, reaffirming the compassion of our community and its respect for our community's diversity. Now therefore, Nadine Woodward, the Mayor of the City of Spokane, on behalf of the citizens of Spokane, does hereby proclaim April 4th through 10th, 2021, as the Days of Remembrance in Spokane in memory of all the Holocaust victims and survivors, and further proclaims that we, as citizens of the City of Spokane, should be vigilant against hatred, persecution, and tyranny, and overcome intolerance and indifference through learning and remembrance. And our special guest tonight is Herschel Zelman, who is the co-chair of the Spokane Community Observance of the Holocaust Planning Committee. Mr. Zelman, welcome tonight, and please share some thoughts.
Thank you. Yom Ashoah, Hebrew for Day of the Holocaust, is a remembrance day to honor the six million Jewish lives that were taken in the systematic genocide perpetrated by Adolf Hitler and his Nazi collaborators during World War II. Its final solution was successful in marginalizing, then dehumanizing, and ultimately murdering two-thirds of the entire Jewish population of Europe. Last Thursday, the 28th day of the Jewish month of Nithon, Jews all over the world observed Yom Ashoah. In 1995, our local synagogue, Temple des Chalons, expanded the observance of Yom Ashoah to include everyone in Spokane. Sadly, this year, like last year, we decided against holding an in-person event due to the pandemic. Instead, our planning committee has been focusing on two projects. Now in its 15th year, we are promoting our writing contest to middle school and high school students all over the Inland Northwest. This year's theme is "When Character Matters: Preventing Genocide." We're challenging the students to learn about the Holocaust, explore the stories of non-Jews who saved Jewish lives during those dark times, and drill into the character traits of those rescuers who they found particularly inspiring. We will announce the winners of the contest in early June. The second project is in partnership with KSPS, Spokane Public Television. We are producing a one-hour video that focuses on how the Holocaust unfolded, weaving in the stories of Spokane residents who survived the Holocaust, as well as the stories of Spokane residents who were children and grandchildren of survivors. Due for release later this month, we anticipate that it will be of interest to the general public and serve as a powerful teaching tool that our area teachers can show their students for many years to come. To Mayor Woodward and the members of the Spokane City Council, thank you so much for this proclamation and for helping us to keep alive Holocaust remembrance in our communities. Thank you.
All right, great. Thank you for visiting us, Mr. Zelman, this evening. It's our pleasure to share this with you. Next, we have proclamation for child abuse awareness. And Councilmember Wilkerson is going to be reading that for us. Our guest that we're going to have couldn't be here with us. So we'll just hear the proclamation, Councilmember.
Thank you, Council President. Whereas all youth have a right to safety, protection, and the prevention of abuse, neglect, and exploitation with which the support services provided at the Children's Advocacy Center are imperative to these rights. Whereas partners with families and children and all other members of Spokane County's Child Abuse Multidisciplinary Team to include Spokane Police Department, Spokane County Prosecuting Attorney's Office, the Department of Children, Youth and Families, Lutheran Community Services Northwest, Spokane County Sheriff's Office, and all other Spokane County law enforcement entities have supported each other and collaborated together in this quest to serve our youth within the City of Spokane. Whereas each member of the Spokane County Child Abuse Multidisciplinary Team is committed to ensure all efforts are made to the safety, protection, and prevention of abuse, neglect, and exploitation through thorough investigations and collaborative support services for youth and their families. Now therefore, I, Nadine Woodward, Mayor of the City of Spokane, on behalf of the citizens of Spokane, do hereby proclaim April 2021 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Spokane and urge all citizens to support and become familiar with the services and benefits offered by the Children's Advocacy Center at Partners with Families and Children and the entire Spokane County Child Abuse Multidisciplinary Team for the continued support and protection of our youth. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wilkerson, and all our partners trying to create a better world. Next, we have Carol Tomsick, chairperson of the Lincoln Heights Neighborhood Council, who's here to give us one in a series of Neighborhood Council reports since we haven't been able to do Town Hall meetings for a year. So Carol, I think I saw you there.
Yeah. Oh, I'm here. I've got, I've got no pictures or anything, but I just got a written presentation.
Yeah.
So I'll, I'll start. It goes, "Our council presently holds its meetings virtually on Zoom every other month, January, March, May, July, September, and November. We also added an extra meeting on the other months to keep our residents connected during the pandemic. Last year, our council had to cancel our March and May in-person meetings due to COVID. We reacted by holding an executive meeting via email to address our neighborhood programs with imminent deadlines. We placed six mobile seat signs in our neighborhoods. Three were auxiliary addresses. Our council worked with Gonzaga Design students under the guidance of Miles and Associate Constable Tane to find traffic calming projects in our neighborhood and then use feedback from our residents to draft traffic calming designs we could submit in our traffic calming applications. We also formed an ad hoc traffic calming committee so our residents could discuss their concerns with the Gonzaga students. We completed our 2020 traffic calming application and included the top three projects in their entirety as our priority one and the remaining projects as priority two. We were aware the traffic calming program was in transition and wanted all of our neighborhood traffic calming projects considered for funding. We continue to identify traffic calming issues in our neighborhood and add them to our other identified projects list. We applied for community engagement grant money. Our council was approved for six double-sided signs for our annual events in Thornton Murphy Park, 500 business cards with our meeting information, and 10 dump passes each for our July and September meeting. We appreciate the city council allocating funds for our community engagement grants so we can reach out to our residents. We sent out emails and posted the revised cleanup program. The cleanup program is one of our neighborhood's most desired programs. We voted on neighborhood community development funds. It was the first year voting as a district rather than individual neighborhood councils. We put our allocated votes towards the transitions, education, roof replacement, and women's house building improvements. It is my hope that the next neighborhood community development program will fund more small businesses, job retention, nonprofit, and affordable housing and homeless projects that directly benefit all the neighborhoods. We are looking forward to in-person meetings again at Southside Community Center when in-person is safe to do. We remain in contact with Lisa Rolfe here, the director of the center. After the two canceled meetings and no in-person meetings on the horizon, we decided to start holding virtual meetings on Zoom in July. We appreciate the community engagement grant paying for our Zoom subscription. Our first few meetings often ended mid-sentence with a 40-minute limit. Meeting highlights. Our Zoom attendance is steady. We had 22 attendees at our last meeting, but many of our past attendees have not joined us virtually. We send out neighborhood updates along with our email, email meeting notifications, and post our meetings on Nextdoor and Facebook. Councilmembers Lori Kinnear and Betsy Wilkerson often attend our meetings. We understand the challenge for them to attend our meetings and greatly appreciate their time and updates. Detective Bob Mossman continues to give us email updates. Our Neighborhood Resource Officer, Jake Willard, has joined us on our Zoom meetings, interacts with our members, and answers their questions. The Vice President of South Perry Business and Neighborhood Association attends our council meetings and provides updates to our members. We are fortunate to work alongside Michelle Weaver. Catherine Winard presented on STA bus changes in our neighborhood. A proposed route that travels east to west on 29th from Lincoln to Freya is on the 2022 service revisions. The route could potentially increase the use of our district center. Marlene Feist presented on the utility rate increases. She gave us a rundown on the water rate change, a breakdown of the solid waste rate change, and information on the city's rebates in water conservation programs. Dan Bueller presented on the proposed Hamlin Park Water Tower. Hamlin Park is in the South Gate neighborhood, but many of our residents are affected by the proposed water tower. There is an active group opposed, as well as residents in support of a water tower in the park. Our council supports the residents opposed to the water tower at the previous 31st Annapolis site and reiterated our support after the city announced it was reconsidering the 31st Annapolis site. In our letter of support, we stated a water tower should be a fiscally responsible use of our taxpayer dollars and not cause a severe impact to the residents nearby. Jacoby Byrd presented on the Water Service Extension Project and the Water Conservation Plan. Our council and residents do not want to deal with the placement of another water tower in our neighborhood, so we will continue to address and support water conservation at our meetings. Our neighborhood has an increased panhandling homeless problem. Tim Segler presented on the problem. We learned not to donate directly to panhandlers, but instead donate money and our time to organizations that assist the homeless. We have homeless camps alongside the Benbir Trail and empty lots in our neighborhood. Our council wants to keep our residents safe on our urban trails and our homeless connected to services. Neighborhood involvement. Our council has taken advantage of Bloomsday being virtual again this year. We have four routes in our neighborhood our residents can use to meet the distance requirement for Bloomsday that include parks and trails, thanks to Sally Phillips. The routes are posted on our council website. We also worked with Adriano Ava to add a route to the Parks Stroll and Roll Challenge, a loop around Lincoln Park, Eltymont, and Benbir. Our council will continue to work with Adriano to preserve our routes and trails in the upcoming Parks Master Plan and to develop a dementia walk-in trail in our neighborhood. Our council is also fortunate to work with Colin Quinnhurst to create new bike paths in our neighborhood, including a connection to the Benbir Trail. We have asked our residents for feedback on our routes to continue to make our streets and sidewalks safer walking and bicycling. Our council spent a year working with residents opposed to the Comp Plan Amendment proposal to rebuild the lot on the northeast corner of Rain 29th from residential to office. An office zoning in a historically designated residential buffer went against the city's comprehensive plan and municipal codes. Our council did not support a modified multifamily zoning because it would have erroneously granted the office zoning on the lot. We did support the modified two-family zoning. I learned a lot about comprehensive plan zoning, municipal codes, and affordable housing during the amendment process. I will strive to keep our residents informed on issues that affect our neighborhood. Our extra meeting this month has three speakers on housing issues. Our council learned about street murals at its Traffic Calming Program update meeting and have explored a street mural as part of our annual event in Thornton Murphy Park. We eagerly wait for more information on the city's updated street mural program. In the meantime, we are also exploring alternatives, including a wall mural with our neighborhood council logo and options for residents to add chalk artwork. We plan to use this year's community engagement grant to design a logo, renew our Zoom account, and obtain dump passes. This year's cleanup program is digital, and some of the residents are not able to access a computer or use digital dump passes, so we are thankful we can obtain dump passes with our community engagement grant. Neighborhood highlights. Spokane Arts in Hoop Town, USA are installing a Spokane River-inspired mural this spring on the basketball courts at Thornton Murphy Park. We are looking forward to the new Thornton Murphy Community Garden next to Southside Community Center. It will have 100 raised boxes and a children's garden. We are very thankful Thornton Murphy Park was added to the two-year pilot project instituting a year-round 20 mile per hour speed limit around parks and parks properties. Neighborhood requests. Our council passed a resolution on September 19th, 2019, for crosswalk signage at 29th and Fifth, 29th and Mount Vernon, and 27th and Fifth. We noted pedestrian infrastructure is a priority of the City of Spokane. We noted multiple issues with the lack of signage at crosswalks in our neighborhood. We need safe crosswalks for our residents to access our district center and neighborhood parks. We want crosswalk signage for motorists traveling in both directions and the installation of the state law stop for pedestrians within sidewalk signage. Thank you. I'm done.
Thank you, Carol, so much. I remember when I first started going to your Neighborhood Council meetings, there were, before you were chair, there were only maybe four to six people there, and partly due to a crisis in the neighborhood. Now there's dozens of people usually when I go. And you've had great leadership, and I've really enjoyed watching your neighborhood become empowered to weigh in on all the issues of the day. So, great work.
Oh, thank you.
And so that's our neighborhood report for this meeting. And then we have a dual report from the Office of Police Ombudsman and Office of Police Ombudsman Commission. And I believe Mr. Logue is going to start us out.
Yes, sir. There we go. I can share my screen. Hopefully, you're seeing what I'm seeing. So, good evening, City Council members. I appreciate the opportunity to appear before you tonight to brief the OPO's 2020 Annual Report in order to fulfill the requirements of SMCO4.32.100. Last year was an important year in the relationship between the public and policing in our country, so I'd like to spend most of my brief tonight explaining the complaint process and discussing oversight. We delivered hard copies of our reports to your offices today, and hopefully you have received the digital copy in advance. Last year, the OPO submitted 50 of the 78 total complaints that SPD received from members of the public. We also submitted 110 referrals to various agencies. As for complaints, inadequate response remains the most common allegation made from the public, with 61 total allegations. Inadequate response complaints have consistently been the most common allegation, followed by complaints about the demeanor of the responding officers. Similar to previous years, City Council District 2, which includes the downtown area, generated the most complaints from the public. Despite the persistence of community concern regarding policing, especially in the latter half of 2020, both complaints and referrals began to trend down. While some of this can be attributed to the pandemic, this trend has continued so far into 2021. Internal complaints, which are complaints made by an officer, have remained relatively stable. As mentioned, in addition to complaints, we received 110 referrals. Thirty-nine of those referrals were external, which goes to other various agencies, and 71 were internal, which we sent to IAA and other departments in the Police Department for customer service opportunities. In 2020, the total number of complaints and referrals was 160. It should be noted that we started doing referrals in 2017. Prior to that, they were submitted as complaints in the complaint system. Due to COVID-19, we worked remotely, beginning in March, all the way through December, and we continue to work remotely. Despite not receiving the walk-ins, we receive steady contact from the public through our web complaint forums, email, social media, and our phone messaging system. So in 2020, I certified all of the cases that IAA sent to me, IAA is Internal Affairs, sent to me for my review. In general, the quality of investigations have vastly improved during my tenure, and the OPO and IAA's working relationship has also improved. We regularly have robust discussions regarding cases and classifications. Of the complaints that the OPO submitted, 63% received an initial review or a preliminary investigation. Most of these cases were suspended due to them being minor allegations that can be sent to the officer supervisor for informal follow-up, which includes training and mentoring. We continue to observe IAA's practice of sending cases to a supervisor for training and mentoring, which goes beyond what is expected in those circumstances. We consider this to be a best practice, and we appreciate the efforts towards continuous improvement. Of the community-generated cases that received a chain-of-command review, 17% were unfounded, exonerated, or not sustained, and 5% were sustained. By comparison, almost 60% of internal complaints received a chain-of-command review, with approximately 36% resulting in sustained findings. These trends have remained consistent and are in line with what is seen in other cities. This chart illustrates the final result of all complaints filed, representing both community complaints and internal complaints, and is provided as specified in the municipal code. It should be noted that findings of misconduct are not the reason that cases are sent up to the chain-of-command for a finding. It is because the final classification of the concern was established as a complaint. But to break that down, complaints are defined by SPD Policy 1020 as a matter in which the complaining party requests further investigation or where a department supervisor determines that further action is warranted. 89% of the allegations sent to the chain-of-command for a finding received either no discipline, which occurs when an allegation is not sustained, or were not applicable, which would occur if the allegation was unfounded. Several cases had yet to be determined prior to publishing the report. That's 14% of those right there. SPD saw a reduction in every category listed here in 2020 as compared to 2019. In 2019, SPD saw a slight rise in every category except for critical incidents, which increased from one to five. These cases only come to our attention as part of the review board process. We are not informed of the incidents as they occur except in cases of deadly force. However, we have not been able to go to the scene of the critical incidents in 2020 as SPD investigators are not allowed to go to the scene as a result of I-940. We will work on this and see if we can arrive at agreements with the Spokane County Sheriff's Office and the Washington State Patrol so that we can fulfill that mandate in the municipal code. We are currently involved in several discussions regarding changes to the Use of Force Review Board process as we have recommended that tactical reviews become a part of them, and robust critical thinking is applied to all aspects of the use of force from the moment the officer is dispatched until the use of force occurs. As the review board process occurs after a disciplinary decision is made, the critical review would not affect the individual officer, but it would affect the department as a whole through training and policy recommendations. Last year, we made 23 recommendations to the Police Department that were all included in Closing Report C19-040. The topical areas we made recommendations for are listed on the slide, and the full recommendations are included in the annual report. Chief Mydl and I, along with Assistant Chief Lundgren and Louie Mayo-Mana, were able to meet several times this last year, and we had a robust discussion regarding the recommendations, after which the department agreed to implement or partially implement 21 of the 23 recommendations. I've already seen several of them completely implemented and many others being worked on. The chief's responses to the recommendations are also in the annual report, verbatim. And the two recommendations which were not considered involve promptly releasing body-worn camera footage, especially in administrative investigations, in which Chief Mydl expressed they were following the advice of City Legal. During 2020, the landscape shifted significantly in regards to police oversight. The public made it clear, both in Spokane and around the country, that current policing practices and laws do not meet society's standards or expectations. Protests erupted in every major city, including Spokane. In Spokane, this protest also coincided with the proposed police guild contract. I voiced my concerns in the hindrances to the OPO's abilities in the version of the contract you considered last summer. Similarly, the public was strongly opposed and unanimously voted to reject that contract showing strong support for the OPO and civilian oversight of law enforcement, which I am grateful for. Similarly, in further support of the OPO, I want to thank you for granting our request to make our administrative specialist a full-time employee. Further, I want to thank you again for the proclamation you gave our office in regards to Ombudstake. After the death of George Floyd, the practice of officers using their knee on a subject's back and neck were immediately banned by many police departments nationwide. Here in Washington, the state agency responsible for developing law enforcement curriculum released a statement saying, "Trainers will explicitly..." released a statement saying trainers will explicitly state that placing a knee on a subject's neck and applying pressure is deadly and should never be done unless the situation clearly warrants the use of deadly force. While SPD did not forbid the use of this technique, they did label it as an exceptional technique which should rarely be used. Following the protests, the chief asked the OPO to conduct an independent review of the police response to the protest. However, to date, we have not received the reports from the protests due to a grievance filed from the Spokane Police Guild, and this delay has been over eight months. The Guild filed a grievance for a concern that the review might be a fishing expedition for potential violations, and any progress has stalled in the transition to a new city administrator where it continues to languish. It is my opinion that the city should only consider grievances on things that have already happened that the Police Guild objects to, and should not entertain a grievance over multiple months on what might happen. However, it is noted during this time SPD is also conducting an internal review of the police response to the protests. Closing reports are one of the few tools civilian oversight has that can truly make an impact. Perhaps it was the environment the report was published in, but I am pleased with the attention we shed on a case with important officer safety and procedural review issues that would have otherwise gone unnoticed. While it is not feasible to write a lengthy and detailed report on every case I disagree with, it is appropriate when an incident arises that presents significant opportunities for improvement of policy, procedure, or officer tactics. We currently have eight cases we have identified for issuing closing report. We are finalizing our first three reports, and we will send them to our attorney for review shortly, before sending them on to the Police Guild for their review, and then ultimately to the OPOC for their approval. We are looking forward to walking through this new process that has been established through the tentative agreement. If more protests are on the horizon, it is only to the Police Department and the public's benefit to take a critical look at the police response to the May 31 protest. I feel it is important that the public knows that both the OPO and Chief Mydl considers this to be an important issue that must be addressed. Most major cities have already conducted a review and published reports at this point. New York City has issued three different reports from three different entities, demonstrating the city's commitment to improving their police response to protests. Most reports have similar findings. The department was caught off guard by the overwhelming protests. Most reports make recommendations to improve mutual aid agreements, improve communication between the command post and the officers on the ground, better track the use of less-lethal munitions, and refine policies to distinguish between where it is appropriate to point pepper balls, the type of dispersal orders issued, et cetera. Given that the OPO now has more latitude to conduct closing reports after the passage of the new police contract, I think there is still value in providing an independent review of the police response to last summer's protests, even though it is almost a year after the incident. I told the chief last week that we will move forward with the review once the Police Guild's grievance regarding it is settled by the city. As part of the OPO's increased reporting ability detail in the new contract, we are working on closing reports on parts of policing that rarely see the light of day. This includes reports on uses of force, collisions, and pursuits, which we only see via the review board process. We've also been working with IAA to begin training the deputy ombudsman on the interview and certification process. Currently, the deputy listens in on officer interviews, and after the conclusion of the interview, we debrief the case in detail. The deputy will also begin reviewing cases for certification as part of her training. After the training period, I will act as the primary on all of these functions, but now, when I am unavailable to attend, the work can continue with the deputy able to attend in my place. As indicated in my letter at the beginning of the annual report, we have worked with HR to properly classify the deputy ombudsman position. There is finally some movement on the OPOC request sent to HR in late 2019, a delay of over a year. However, Amber Richards is committed to getting this done and done correctly. Preliminary information suggests the ombudsman and deputy ombudsman positions must be reclassified based on the duties we perform. I look forward to Louie Mayo-Manna being properly compensated for the work she has been performing since late 2019. Subject to your questions, I will be followed by OPOC Vice Chair and former Chair during 2020, Jenny Rose.
Any questions for Mr. Logue before Jenny starts? And Councilmember Stratton?
Bart, I just have a quick question, and it's in regards to the positions. So, the part-time positions that we approved become a full-time position. Has all of that paperwork, everything been done, and that person is now in place, working full-time, and being paid as a full-time employee?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And so, the other position, the deputy ombudsman, that's finally, something's finally moving with that to get her properly classified and paid as a deputy ombudsman. And have they talked about back pay for the duties she's been performing without that title?
Yes, we're working on that. There's some disagreement as to whether or not the Police Guild contract has a say in that, but we'll work through that.
Okay. Thank you. And thank you for all your work. I know this has been a challenging year.
Yes, ma'am.
And it's good to see your face. I don't think I've seen you for nine months to a year, so thank you for joining us.
Sure. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Logue? All right. Well, before we turn it over to Vice Chair Rose, I just wanted to thank you, Bart, for your work and your office's work in the last year, working with council and helping us on the contract, and really focusing on how to be more effective. So, thank you for, you know, I don't get to see you that often as well. I just want to thank you and your team for all your work, so thank you very much for that.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Jenny Rose, good to see you. What do you have for us?
Good to see you. Good to see everybody. Thank you for having me, President Biggs and the City Council. Let me get my screen up, I hope. Okay. Hopefully, you can, can you see it?
Not yet.
Oh, okay. What did I do? What did I do wrong here? Let me try that again. Oh, here we go.
Yep. Yep, we can see it now.
Am I getting an echo? Can you guys hear an echo?
I don't think so.
Okay. All right. Well, if you remember, last year, we did our annual report in October. So, we're ahead of the game this year. We decided that we were going to really work hard to make sure that we were doing our annual report in the first part of the year instead of the latter part of the year. So, here we go. Mine will be very brief, because a lot of it will be much like Mr. Logue's report. Whoops. Don't know what happened there. Well, obviously, we continue to meet virtually due to the social distancing and the COVID. However, we did manage to have seven regular meetings and two special meetings in 2020. We also met with other individuals, as you know, regarding, we met with President Biggs, we met with some of the council members, we met with Chief Mydl. And regarding the community response to the Police Guild contract, as you all know, we had city-wide response. We had a few little, I don't want to call them demonstrations, but a few citizens that backed what they felt was inconsistent in the Police Guild as far as the OPO and the And that just showed the strength that our community has, I believe, behind us. As far as Ms. Cody's position, I would like to thank everybody, as Mr. Logue did, for making her part-time position full-time. I think it really has added the value that we needed and the seriousness of having the OPO and the OPOC. And one of the other things that Mr. Logue mentioned was the closing report that OPO was asked to write regarding May 31, and it was blocked by the Police Guild. And then the last thing is, at the end of 2020, we had four commissioners on board. We had welcomed Luke Jasmine towards the end of 2020, and we still had one vacancy. And thank goodness, in February, we were able to welcome a new commissioner, Ms. Navarrete. And I would like to thank the council members for, I want to say, finding her and putting her on the commission with us. So, right now, we are working with a full commission, and it is wonderful. As far as actions for 2020, we, excuse me, let me look here at my notes. We unanimously approved all of the OPO's 23 recommendations and everything that went with that. We also had a resolution that we could not do the ride-alongs because of COVID and other training. Usually, we like to get out and do some training, but all of our training was done online, such as NACOL, which is the National Association for Civilian Oversight of Law Enforcement. We were able to partake in that, which helped immensely. And I don't need to go, well, the 22 recommendations, I don't really need to go over, as Bart has kind of talked a little bit about that. So, one thing that we do is we do the evaluation of the OPO. And I would just like to say that I believe that the professionalism that the three members of the OPO office is really outstanding, and their dedication is really outstanding. I mean, COVID completely transformed the way that we work in our working environment and the pace, and as you could see by Mr. Logue's graph, that it still continued well beyond the confines of City Hall, because they were working at home. And as with anything they do, their work is not only professional, but it's well researched. Everything that we need as commissioners is given to us by Ms. Mayo-Manna's research and Ms. Cody's research. And as you know, they did have a 50-page use-of-force that they were able to release in February. And as far as the team atmosphere, oh my gosh, they meet several times a week and have met several times a week throughout 2020, and have invited us, the commissioners, anytime on these meetings. And so, the open communication, I think, has just been such a key to keep everybody connected, especially when we're working at home. And then excellent training is always constant for the OPO. Bart continues to engage in NACOL as a leader. Louie May and Christine are always committed to training on a variety of topics, and they are always reaching out to us as commissioners for more training, to further educate us. Unfortunately, right now, it's virtual, but hopefully in the near future, it will be more, it'll be more than that. And then, looking ahead, I want to say post-COVID, even though I don't know if everything will really change back to normal, engaging the community more. We have several of our commissioners that are already engaged with community activists, and I really believe we need their help to help, we need their help to help us, strengthen us, and that we are also looking forward to letting our citizens know that there is a place to go if they have concerns about our Police Department, and also, not only concerns, but also commendations for our Police Department. And we're still working on that piece. I think there's a lot of people that still do not understand what the OPO and the OPOC does, and of course, always trying to stay as positive as possible. OPOC will continue to work with OPO and the recommendations that we see in order to make Spokane the best place that it can be. And again, when the time is appropriate, more training for our commissioners, especially our new commissioners. We have about three commissioners that have been around for a while, and then, of course, our new commissioners, we hope to get them up to date with more training. And then the last thing, of course, is the transparency and the trust as much as possible. We need that trust in our community, with our citizens, and with the Police Department. So, we are going to continue to work on that. So, that is actually the end of my report. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Vice Chair Rose? All right. I'm not seeing any. Again, we have been working together for so many years in this, Jenny, and I just appreciate your steady hand and leadership, and so excited that you have a full commission now, and you really, it seems to have hit your stride both as a commission and as an OPO. So, thank you for that work, and we look forward to doing a lot more together with you in this coming year. So, thanks.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right. Let's turn to our legislative agenda.
Special Budget Ordinance C-36028, amending ordinance number C-35971 passed by the City Council December 14, 2020, and entitled an ordinance adopting the annual budget of the City of Spokane for 2021, making appropriations to the various funds of the City of Spokane Government for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2021, and providing it shall take effect immediately upon passage, and declared an emergency appropriating funds in asset management fund from various accounts, $1,323,375 to various accounts, same amount, and parking meter fund from unappropriated reserves, $123,376 to transfer to asset management fund, same amount. This action budgets for loan proceeds, capital expenses, and debt services related to the SIP loan for parking meter replacement deferred from the March 29, 2021 agenda.
And by way of quick background, both this special budget ordinance and the next resolution on a SIP loan, an internal loan, are related to parking infrastructure, namely meters and kiosks. Our meters downtown are getting quite old and need to be updated. There are two things we're considering, we're going to get these hopefully passed tonight, but they won't be implemented until we get a little more information on the mix between how many are going to be parking kiosks versus parking meters. And then, secondly, whether or not we actually need to take a loan. We probably wouldn't have to take a loan except for the lagging revenues from parking due to COVID, but we have these American Recovery Plan funds coming, and so we're going to figure out whether we want to go into debt or use those funds. So, we have an assurance from the department that this is just getting everything lined up, but those final decisions will get made later. And we don't have any community comment on the special budget ordinance. We do have one on the resolution coming up, but is there any council commentary or questions? All right. Not seeing any, so we'll have a roll call. It takes five to pass a special budget ordinance. Councilmember Mum?
Aye.
Councilmember Stratton?
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear?
Aye.
Councilmembers and I. Councilmember Burke?
Aye.
Councilmember Cathcart?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson?
Aye.
All right. That passes seven to zero. On to resolutions and final reading ordinances.
Resolution 2021-21 of the City of Spokane, Washington, providing for the issuance and sale of a taxable limited tax general obligation bond in the aggregate principal amount of not to exceed $1,200,000 to secure an interfund loan from the Spokane Investment Pool to the Asset Management Fund to finance a portion of the capital needs for replacement of parking meters, fixing the date for maturity, interest rate terms, and covenants of the bond, establishing the provisions for repayment of the interfund loan established thereby, authorizing the sale and delivery of the bond to the city, and providing for other matters properly relating thereto, deferred from the March 29, 2021 agenda.
All right. We have one. All right. We have one community member who would like to testify on this, Nicolette Occle Tree. If you're there, if you want to hit star three. All right. Welcome, Nicolette. Go ahead and introduce yourself. You have up to three minutes.
Hello, it's Nicolette Occle Tree. I know that this opinion might be definitely in the minority and not shared by most, but I've always been of the mind that parking should be free downtown. And one of the reasons is because the cost of parking is a huge barrier for low-income families. I was, you know, the oldest of four kids in a very low-income family here in Spokane, and sometimes parking was a barrier. And it doesn't sound like a whole lot when you're only talking about a few dollars, but when you're only talking about a few dollars for a low-income family, that can really be the difference between whether or not you can participate as in maybe riding the carousel or not. It's also very expensive. I mean, it looks like it's going to be a little over $3 million over the next three years to get some of this done. And that doesn't even look like that's all the amount it will take. And the amount of revenue that we actually get back in doesn't really seem like it's actually making it profitable. I also think with more digitized versions of how you pay with a parking meter, that's going to cause other people who are low-income to avoid coming downtown. And if we want to make downtown a more inclusive place, we want to make it a place where people can really engage, they can maybe have a coffee while they're down there, or they can ride the carousel with their kids, or any number of these other activities they can do downtown. That costs money, because remember, there's an increasing level of forced consumerism downtown, where if you want to use the bathroom, or you want to sit down somewhere, you often have to go in and patronize a business. And so adding parking on top of that really adds a barrier for low-income families. And so while you may not be able to change anything now, I just wanted to go on the record to say that I think parking should be free downtown. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any council commentary or questions? All right. Seeing none, we'll go to a roll call. Councilmember Mum?
Aye.
Councilmember Stratton?
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear?
Aye.
Council Presidents and I. Councilmember Burke?
Aye.
Councilmember Cathcart?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson?
Aye.
All right. That passes seven to zero. We deferred Resolution 29 for two weeks on the Planning Commission 2021 work program, which brings us to the next resolution.
Resolution 2021-30, expressing support for supplemental aquatics facility and operational funding support in 2021 not to exceed $220,000.
Again, this is providing some budgetary authority for the Parks Department to really open up the pools. Again, might be a likely candidate for Recovery Act money, but this would express our support for spending the money regardless of where we get it and allow the pools to open up this year. We don't have any community members signed up to testify on this. Any council commentary or questions? Councilmember Cathcart?
Yeah, I'll just say I'm happy to support. I think finding opportunities to get some things back to normal is important, and especially for our kids and families. And I think this is just a great opportunity for them to have something to do this summer. So glad to put this forward.
Councilmember Mum?
I just want to mention that our Parks Director Garrett Jones had spoken this morning how this really is going to potentially triple or quadruple the number of people who are going to be able to access pools, and it's going to be fabulous all across the city.
All right. We'll have a roll call. Councilmember Mum?
Aye.
Councilmember Stratton?
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear?
Aye.
Council Presidents and I. Councilmember Burke?
Aye.
Councilmember Cathcart?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson?
Aye.
All right. That passes seven to zero. Next resolution.
Resolution 2021-31, setting hearing before City Council for May 17, 2021, for the vacation of scenic Boulevard between 27th and 29th, as requested by Dave Dupree.
And there is no council commentary on this? Oh, excuse me, no community request for testimony? Is there any council commentary? All right. This is just setting the hearing for a month from now. So we'll have a roll call. Councilmember Mum?
Aye.
Councilmember Stratton?
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear?
Aye.
Council Presidents and I. Councilmember Burke?
Aye.
Councilmember Cathcart?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson?
Aye.
All right. That's seven to zero. So set the hearing. Ordinance 35924 is deferred for a month on the pipeline franchise for further negotiations with the pipeline. And Ordinance 36003, I don't know if we deferred that a month?
Indefinitely.
Indefinitely, yes. Indefinitely. That has to do with the cost of parades and events, and we're making good progress on that, but we didn't set a time on it. And that'll bring us to the next ordinance.
And then we have Resolution 2021-33 also.
Yeah. Let's do the next ordinance, and then we'll do that resolution.
Ordinance C-35946, vacating Grant Street from the north line of Fifth Avenue to the south right-of-way line of I-90. First reading held September 21, 2020.
All right. There's no community testimony on this. This is essentially recognizing that all the conditions have been satisfied for this little stub of a road overlooking I-90. Is there any council commentary? Seeing none, we'll have a roll call. Councilmember Mum?
Aye.
Councilmember Stratton?
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear?
Aye.
Council Presidents and I. Councilmember Burke?
Aye.
Councilmember Cathcart?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson?
Aye.
All right. That passes seven to zero. And then we added, at our 3:30 session, an emergency resolution, if you would like to read that.
Resolution Number 2021-33, a resolution declaring an emergency and authorizing the Water Department to contract with an appropriate paving company in lieu of public bidding for repairing an approximately 100-foot section of Grand Boulevard near 18th Avenue, whereas a 12-inch cast iron water main in Grand Boulevard broke on the morning of Monday, April 12, 2021, and whereas Grand Boulevard is a major north-south arterial that carries approximately 17,000 cars each day, and whereas the brake damaged the surface and subsurface of an approximately 100-foot section of Grand Boulevard and has left part of the street undrivable, and whereas the damage is too extensive to be repaired successfully by the city's own street department crews, who typically would make street repairs following a main break, and whereas pursuant to SMC 7.06.180, the City Council by resolution may waive public bid requirements for purchases, public works, and services in the event of an emergency, and whereas an urgency and emergency does exist, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the city of Spokane, that staff is hereby authorized to contract with an appropriate paving contractor in lieu of public bidding for the necessary repair work to Grand Boulevard at a cost not to exceed $100,000, and be it further resolved, that staff will bring the final contract to the City Council for approval.
Thank you. There's no requested public comment. Any council commentary? I will just offer that I jogged by it this morning, and it is a huge sinkhole right in the middle of Grand, shutting off all of northbound Grand at 18th. So it truly is an emergency for people commuting on the South Hill. We'll have a roll call. Councilmember Mum?
Aye.
Councilmember Stratton?
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear?
Aye.
Council Presidents and I. Councilmember Burke?
Aye.
Councilmember Cathcart?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson?
Aye.
All right. That passes seven to zero, and that brings us to first reading ordinances.
Ordinance C-36033, relating to program participation criteria for the U-Help Utility Billing Payment Assistance Program in partnership for response to the COVID-19 pandemic, enacting a new section 13.09.100 of the Spokane municipal code and declared an emergency. Ordinance C-36034, relating to the Shoreline Master Program periodic review overseen by the Washington State Department of Ecology, amending the Spokane municipal code, Chapter 17, 8.020 definitions, Section 17, 8.020.040, and 17, 8.020.060, and various portions of Chapter 17, E.060, shoreline regulations, Section 17, E.060.110.150.290.300.340.690.770.790.800.810.820. Excuse me, .830.840, and .380. Ordinance C-36035, aligning the greenhouse gas reduction goals of the city of Spokane with state targets, and amending Sections 15.05.005, .020, and .060 of the Spokane municipal code. Ordinance C-36036, relating to electric vehicle purchasing, repealing Section 7.06.175, and enacting a new Section 7.06.175A of the Spokane municipal code. Ordinance C-36037 will be considered under hearings, Item H1B. Further action is deferred on the first reading ordinances.
All right. And there was no requested community testimony, but just a reminder, if you're viewing, we did change our rules this year and are allowing community members to testify on first reading of ordinances in case they have suggestions or ideas for us that we might amend over the next week until we have final reading. So that brings us to tonight's hearing.
H1A, hearing on the vacation of the alley between Columbia Avenue and Joseph Avenue from the east line of Julia Street to the west line of Myrtle Street, as requested by Dan Cantu. H1B, first reading ordinance, C-36037, vacating the alley between Columbia Avenue and Joseph Avenue from the east line of Julia Street to the west line of Myrtle Street. Further action is deferred on the first reading ordinance.
All right. We don't have any requested community testimony, but we have Eldon Brown here to walk us through before we vote to consider approval subject to conditions.
Good evening. The applicants amended the petition to vacate this alley between Columbia and Joseph from Julia to Myrtle. And staff did review that. The purpose of the vacation was actually to consolidate property for the purposes of building an actual indoor sports and training facility was the goal on this thing. So we did actually review the application when it came in. It looked like a good candidate for vacation. East of this alley over there no longer exists, so the alley only continues to the west. So this is at the end of the line, I guess, on alleys out there. Anyway, when we reviewed it, there were no city utilities in the alley. We did have a Vista and Comcast, got some facilities in there. The flatting of this property was in the timeline of the non-user statute, so the applicants requested no cost vacation. And there, so those are the elements of the vacation. Staff reviewed it and would recommend approval of the vacation subject to conditions. And basically, the condition is either deserving easements for the Comcast and the Vista, or actually having them relocate their facilities as part of the development, so we don't need easements. So anyway, be happy to answer any questions about that.
Any questions for Eldon? I'm not seeing any, so thank you. We haven't, again, no community testimony, and so just checking, we're voting then on this, subject to approval. So the vote is to approve it subject to them meeting the conditions later. So we'll have a roll call. Councilmember Mum?
Aye.
Councilmember Stratton?
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear?
Aye.
Council Presidents and I. Councilmember Burke?
Aye.
Councilmember Cathcart?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson?
Aye.
Okay. That is seven to zero. And then, do you read that first reading ordinance again, or not?
I've read the first.
You already read the first reading?
I read that.
All right. All right. That brings us to the end of the legislative agenda. We do have one speaker for open forum, and that's Nicolette Occle Tree. So Nicolette, if you want to hit star three. All right. Welcome again, Nicolette. You have up to three minutes.
Hello, council. It's Nicolette again. So the last two victories Gonzaga's men's basketball team had before the championship were celebrated by couch fires. At least seven couches were burned on two different nights. Video footage surfaced, some of which I'm sure you viewed on the news or on Facebook. But there are a number of disturbing things I witnessed when I viewed the footage that I'd like to took the time to bring to your attention today. Very large numbers of college students spilled onto residential streets, blocking intersections, jumping out of moving cars, hanging out of moving cars. Open containers of alcohol were in the hands of many students. Some students were on the roofs of houses, waving flags, but most were in the streets in huge numbers, unmasked, burning couches. Footage of the couches being burned also showed police officers without masks, which most photos and video footage of police officers since the beginning of the pandemic have showed them unmasked. And the police officers were just watching the fires burn. Students were drinking from open containers of alcohol within arm's length of the police officers in these videos. No one was arrested for the burning of the couches. No one was arrested for public intoxication or having open containers of alcohol in the streets or driving with a passenger hanging outside of the car or driving when a passenger jumps out of the moving car. In stark contrast, on May 31, 2020, a heavily militarized Spokane Police Department in SWAT gear with bear cats shot peaceful protesters with rubber bullets and tear gas canisters. Folks with their hands up chanting "Hands up, don't shoot" were shot at. But when Gonzaga students filled the streets, driving recklessly, drinking from open containers and burning couches, releasing toxic fumes, the police just watched it burn. No SWAT teams, no tear gas, no flashbangs, no pepper bullets, no arrests. Now, I'm not saying that these students should have been treated the way protesters were treated on May 31, 2020, not by any means. I do think that the contrast between the way the two groups were treated shows an inconsistency that is problematic within the Spokane Police Department. And I'm very glad to have heard earlier, the Ombudsman Office indicates that they are trying their best to give us an analysis of what happened on March 31, 2020. And I hope that you will encourage that effort and support it as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for sharing with us tonight. And that brings us to the end of all of our business for this evening. So I wish you all a good night. Please take care of yourself, and if you can, take care of somebody else. We have study session at 11 o'clock this Thursday, and then we have our normal City Council the following week. Take care, everyone. We'll see you. We're adjourned.